Call this meeting at a Perry Independent School District order. Let the record show that our board members are present. This meeting has been duly called. Notice this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Helping Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Would you all join me in prayer, please? Dear Heavenly Father, we're also very, very grateful for the opportunity we have to serve. We thank you for the moisture we've received, albeit it's a little nippy moisture. We thank you for the safety that you provided to us for getting here today. We ask for safe travels on the way home after our meeting. Be with us as we discuss the state of the district this evening, that all the decisions we make be within your will for us, for this district and for this community. In thy heavenly name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Do we have anyone for open forum? For the time, for a public hearing regarding the targeted improvement plan. Declare the public hearing open.
Yes, okay, so, and just to, you guys will have this before you in just a little bit. As you'll remember, our junior high was in school improvement for a little while. When you get into school improvement, the state asks you, or ask is a nice word, you're directed to develop a targeted improvement plan, which does an in-depth analysis of the school, and you develop a plan on how to improve it. Our junior high is out of school improvement and has been for about a year now. But finishing up, part of getting out of school improvement, we applied for several grants to help us with that process. We are in the final stage of that grant. And so, we were still asked or directed as part of the grant to develop a targeted improvement plan for the junior high. It is in your board packet. You've seen this. You'll be looking at it a little bit later to vote on it. But this is just the final stage. And really, honestly, this is mainly done for compliance. These are things that junior high is doing already and has accomplished in many ways. But we're required to develop a plan. We're required to bring it to the community for any public comment. And we should be finishing this up this year. So, we will not have a, junior high will not be under a targeted improvement plan according to school improvement next year. So, that being said, is there anybody that has any public comment?
Comments from the public, last chance. Seeing none, declare the public meeting closed. Next item on the agenda is administrative reports. We'll start off with the superintendent's report.
Okay, first of all, I've got just a couple of things. And I've got a long list of successful students with our UIL competition. So, I'm going to save a little bit of time for that. But just to touch on a few things, really mainly one thing as we walk forward into the evening, and before I get to that list, I do want to talk just a little bit about the weather. Today's weather was quite snowy and the roads weren't fantastic. I would just like to say to everyone here, it surprised us. I monitored the weather all the way up until I went to sleep last night. And when I went to sleep last night, it was about a 1% or 2% chance at 8:00, and we weren't supposed to get any real snow until about noon. And that was supposed to be less than an inch. So, I went to sleep. And I got up this morning and I looked outside and the buses were already leaving the yard, and we had snow on the ground. And no one really anticipated when it was going to get here or how much it was going to get here. So, we did our best to make it through the day. I was thankful that the students who made it, the teachers who made it, were safe. We tried to release a little early to give our, especially to give our buses a chance to get home, get on the roads, get home before dark. We made it through that. And we do have, we have called a 10 o'clock or a two-hour delay for tomorrow to give everybody a chance to get up, give the roads a little bit of a chance. We should have some sun tomorrow and hopefully that'll melt some of them. But I do want to remind everybody, especially if you're watching online, please be safe tomorrow. Plan extra time to make it to school. Don't do anything in your driving or any of your decisions that would cause you or your family members to be unsafe. So, we have a little superintendent group of several of us, a text stream, that when it comes to weather, we all start checking with each other to see what's happening in other towns before we make calls and to see what other people are thinking. And we were all texting, anybody see this coming? Nope, sure didn't, you know? And so, but we try to coordinate that. So, we were all, we're all making decisions throughout the day, today, including me. So, I do want to say that to you guys. As far as other business, I do have some resignations to announce. If you remember, we, the board approved some resignation incentives, and I think that's helped draw some of these resignations out. Although for, I don't enjoy seeing this list because if we're getting resignations at this time of year, a lot of times these are retirements and these are veteran teachers who are very, very good, but are, you know, it's time for them to enjoy retirement. So, I would like to announce the following resignations that we received. Sean Tevis, art at the high school. Debbie Herbert, math at the high school. Lori Stallings, English Language Arts at Williams. Kevin Black is Social Studies at the junior high. Amy Dear is Special Ed at Williams. And Reed Kates, who's been with us for a number of years at Williams, principal, Williams has elected to retire this year. He'll be retiring at the end of the year. Now, we also have just some resigning, retiring will be Ms. Lisa Kemp. Lisa's done a fantastic job, as you guys well know, and knows her business very well. And she's going to be very, very missed next year. We have a lady training with her now to take over, but filling Lisa's shoes will be a difficult, a difficult situation. Also, her husband, Alan Kemp, has announced his resignation. He's retiring at the end of the year. Same thing for Alan. Alan's been with us a number of years and has done an incredible job keeping our buildings up and maintained and keeping staff and our grounds looking good. We're going to deeply miss both Alan and Lisa who are electing to retire. I'm trying not to take this personally that I came and they retired, but that's okay.
We all have to accept the resignation.
That's true. That's true. Also resigning is Teresa Childers as the principal at Kinder. And Maribel Murillo, who is ELAR and Special Ed at Ludi Pena. Since we're talking about Mrs. Childers at Kinder, just to let you guys know, we have an interim principal that will be stepping in. It is Kelly Kates, who is Reed Kate's wife. And she's an experienced principal who was recently at Booker. And she had her first day today. And I checked with her in between the end of the day and this meeting, and she had a great day. And she is going to do a great job, I think, at that campus. We're very happy to have her onboard. Okay, are we ready for our recognitions? These are the elementary, UIL results, elementary and junior high UIL academic composition results, or competition results for 2024. We'll start in the elementaries. We'll start with the lower grades and work our way up. So, at Wright Elementary, second grade. Wright Elementary, first grade, won second place overall. Third grade, won second place overall. In creative writing, in second grade, first place, Beau Carrion. Third place, Corey Kirkland. Fifth place, Libby Watcher. And sixth place, Jet Wood. In storytelling, in second grade, first place, Beau Carrion. Second, Croy Ariano. Third, Eileen Ruelis. And fifth, Olivia Bectold. In music ministry, in third grade, second place, Annie Schwach. Sixth place, Zoe Yara. In ready writing, in third grade, second place, Anna Zavala. Fourth place, Axel Castanon. Fifth place, Kennedy Mraz. And sixth place, London Campbell. In spelling, third grade, first place was Diego Ramirez. Fourth place, Braylon Fletcher. Sixth place, Kennedy Mraz. In storytelling, third grade, third place was Axel Castanon. And fourth place, Ali Shigoda. In, at Williams Elementary, fourth grade, second place, got second place overall. Fifth grade, got first place overall. In arts smart, in fourth grade, Diego Rosales got first place. And Logan Brower got fifth place. In chess puzzle, fourth grade, Diego Rosales got first place. And fourth place, Ethan Garcia. And fifth place, Gentry Edwards. Music memory, fourth grade, Adelina Olivas was fourth place. And Brynland Price was fifth. In number sense, fourth grade, first place, Chase Manras. Third place, Kane Alvarez. And sixth place, Ezekiel Melendez. In oral reading, fourth grade, first place was Emily Osuna. Fifth place, Larissa Robertson. And sixth place, Brianna Ramirez. In ready writing, fourth grade, third place was Jordan Estrada. And sixth place was Sophia Ruiz. In spelling, fourth grade, first place, Jaylen Martinez. Second place, Daryl Lynch. And sixth place, Aldo Milton. In arts smart, fifth grade, Kemely Rosales was first. Nicole Ugaldé was second. Madison Laird was third. Bristol Applehans was fourth. And Isaac Zamora was fifth. In chess puzzle, fifth grade, first place was Iker Escobar. Fourth place, Brody Carrion. And sixth place, Rene Medrano. Dictionary skills, fifth place, Fred Rodriguez was first, first, or fifth grade, excuse me. Fred Rodriguez first, fourth was Lydia Nagel. And fifth was Victor Olmos. Listening skills, fifth grade, first place, Miguel Valenzuela. Third place, Jamison Lamonts. And fourth place, McCoy Barnett. In maps, graph and graphs and charts, fifth grade, first place, Miguel Valenzuela. Fourth place, McCoy Barnett. And fifth place, Bristol Applehans. In music memory, in fifth grade, first place, Victor Olmos. Second place, Brody Carrion. Third place, Sophia Hernandez. Fourth place, Jamison Lamonts. In sixth place, Lydia Nagel. In number sense, in fifth grade, third place, Jesús Hernández. Oral reading, fifth grade, first place, Madison Laird. Fourth place, Valerie Olivas. Fifth place, Nicole Beceril. And sixth place, Sophia Hernández. Ready writing, fifth grade, first place, Hemená Flores. Fourth place, Kemely Rosales. And sixth place, Merrillani Placencia. In spelling, fifth grade, third place, Nicole Araho. Fourth place, Valerie Olivas. And fifth place, David Lyra. In social studies, fifth grade, first place is Alex Vázquez. Fourth place, Mabry Cummins. And in sixth place, Axel Espino. Moving into the junior high results. Junior high got second place overall. In arts smart, seventh grade, first place, Medhi Martínez. Third place, Medhi Marquez Vástez. In calculator applications, in sixth grade, Malik Hayward was third place. And Kalen Robertson was fourth place. In calculator applications, in seventh grades, Hannah Kemp was third place. Fifth place, a tie with Adrian Vega and Adrian Vargas. In calculator applications, eighth grade, first place, Yasmin Valenzuela. Second place, Natalia Martínez. And sixth place, Alize Baraza. Chess puzzle, sixth grade, first place, Mateo Villa. Chess puzzle, seventh grade, third place, Nathan Gurley. Fourth place, Adán González. And fifth place, Andrew Russell. In chess puzzle, eighth grade, first place, Landon Lynch. In dictionary skills, sixth grade, fourth place, Paisley Curl. Also, fourth place, Sawyer Cummins, tied there for fourth. In sixth place, Kalen Robinson. In dictionary skills, seventh grade, first place, Avery Castanon. Second place, Kyle Johnson. Fifth place, Bricia Sanmaniego. In dictionary skills, eighth grade, third place, Brian Miranda. Fourth place, Alize Baraza. Fifth place, Lindly Castanon. In editorial skills, sixth grade, first place, Ava Turner. Third place, Olivia Dunsworth. And sixth place, Areli Beceril. In editorial writing, in eighth grade, second place, Narissa Alvarez. And fourth place, Matthew Mayer. In impromptu speaking, sixth grade, first place, Mackenzie Burke. Second place, Morgan McElroy. Fourth place, Paisley Curl. In impromptu speaking, seventh grade, second place, Hayden Murray. Third place, Brynlee Rodriguez. Fourth place, Sophia Landeros. In impromptu speaking, eighth grade, third place, Marisol Deleta. Third place, Lindly Castanon. In listening skills, sixth grade, third place, Ava Turner. In listening skills, seventh grade, fourth place, Rustin Newman. And sixth place, Jasper Wood. In mathematics, sixth grade, fifth place, Alex Martínez. In mathematics, seventh grade, third place, Gilberto Torres Jr. In mathematics, eighth grade, first place, Yasmin Valenzuela. Second place, Brian Miranda. And sixth place, Rainey Zhang. In maps, graphs and charts, sixth grade, fourth place, Hannah Ariola. In maps, graphs and charts, seventh grade, second place was Hannah Kemp. Third place, Adán González. And fourth place, Xairi Cepeda. In maps, graphs and charts, eighth grade, first place, Narissa Alvarez. Second place, Yasmin Valenzuela. In music memories, memory, sixth grade, first place, Josie Rosales. Second place, Hannah Ariola. In music memories, memory, seventh and eighth grade, second place, Brian Miranda. Third place, Brooklyn Morgan. And fifth place, Serena May. Modern oratory, seventh grade, second place, Medhi Marcus Vázquez. Number sense, sixth grade, first place, Oceas Zavala. Second place, Cordell Espino. In number sense, seventh grade, fifth place, Medhi Martínez. Number sense, eighth grade, third grade, third place, Landon Lynch. Fourth place, Brian Miranda. In oral reading, seventh grade, second place was Hannah Kemp. Fifth place was Victoria Wright. And also tied for fifth, Marisol Deleta Ledesma. In oral reading, eighth grade, second place, Narissa Alvarez. Fourth place, Reagan Yeatman. And sixth place, Alexa Vela. Ready writing, sixth grade, third place, Ava Turner. Fifth place, Ava Baker. And sixth place, Josie Rosales. Ready writing, seventh grade, second place, Brynlee Rodriguez. Fifth place, Avery Castanon. And sixth place, Xaili Leal. In ready writing, eighth grade, second place, Kendra Brady. Third place, Reagan Yeatman. And fifth place, Brian Miranda. In science, sixth grade, first place, Oceas Zavala. Second place, Ava Turner. Third place, Avery Martínez. In science, seventh grade, second place, Eric Trejo. In third place, Adán González. Science, eighth grade, first place, Rainey Zhang. Second place, Brooke Helker. In spelling, sixth grade, first place, Malik Hayward. Second, Cordell Espino. And fourth, Aspen Martínez. In spelling, seventh grade, third place, Bricia Sanmaniego. And sixth place, Itzi Castaneda. In spelling, eighth grade, first place, Reagan Yeatman. Second place, Riley Yeatman. In social studies, sixth grade, fourth place, Olivia Dunsworth. Sixth place, Tyler Murray. In social studies, seventh grade, second place, Hannah Kemp. Fourth place, Xairi Cepeda. And fifth place, Bryson Carranza. Social studies, eighth grade, first place, Narissa Alvarez. Fourth place, Brian Miranda. In one-act play, second place, the overall play got second place. All-star cast was Lindly Castanon, Braylon Kyle and Brynlee Rodriguez. Honorable mention cast, Eileen Arana, Brylee McLaren and Jaylen Mercado. That wraps up quite a list of kids who are very successful. I'm about to go get mine. Our kids did really good in our UIL academics and very proud of their results. You know, there was quite a bit of first and second places in there. Our kids and coaches do an outstanding job. And so, with that, I want to say congratulations to them and to their families. And, Mr. President, back to you, sir.
Campus reports, we have several of our reporters here that have already gone home due to the weather. So, if we have someone without a report, somebody has a question on it, we just take those questions right back to Mr. Brown and we get our answers on those or have questions on those. I'm going to go through the list and I can't see who all is around the corner. If you're not here, you don't have to come out. Ludi Martin. This next page, Perry High School. I know you're here.
Everything's really good at high school. I don't have anything new to add to the report. But thank you all for what you do for us. I know it's Board Appreciation Month, but because of the weather, our high school culinary is going to serve dinner for you next month instead of tonight.
Thank you very much. Ms. Weir?
Sandy out there?
I did not see Reed. I'm assuming he ate at home.
Yes.
Yes, he's not going to retire for 18,000 years. Yes, Wright. Wright?
Things are going great at Wright. Reed wanted me to say everything's great at Williams. So, and I'm sure everything is great at Kinder also. I don't have anything else to add to my report, but I do want to just say thank you for all the things that y'all do as a board. You make some very hard decisions and just know that the community appreciates what y'all are doing. It's a very thankless job, but the schools are, you know, it's going great everywhere. And y'all have made a big positive impact to the community of Perryton, so thank you.
Director's reports. Mr. Kemp, do we have a calendar with big X's as you report? Two more to go, one more to go.
I saw him doing the little construction paper chains. He's hanging in his office, he's ripping one off every day.
I do have a little bit to add to the report. It's on the same thing. I think the day I turned that in, I did get a phone call. From Eric with Vertical One, the insurance, I mean, the PSA system people did get back with him and give him a quote. They will come install the panels, but they won't disassemble them. Or his company, they won't do that. We're going to have to get back with the insurance and do a little more adjusting because there's going to be a little more cost than what they allowed. They're wanting to have a place to store them inside the building prior to them installing them so they can act inside the building. So, probably going to be looking at, going to have a place to put them while school's going on. So, I'm just trying to figure it out. But if it goes out, they can bring it up and then have them in there a week or so and then come put them in. Sorry?
Man, that struck out for you.
It's been a mess for sure. Don't have anything to add other than that. Questions?
Looks like we're good. Thanks, Alan.
Thanks, Alan.
Didn't see Ms. Walker. Communication safety. Anything new? Have anything to add to your report? Don't see Ms. Hughley. Ms. Hughley is not here as well. Dr. Hale. Too far. I turned too many pages.
She is not here. She's out of town.
Hiding in the back.
We do have our ID.
What do you have, Josh?
I think I didn't have the what I put on there. Job question.
See softball and baseball are back and going. I was thinking back the fond memories to my years as a softball parent. And February, January tournaments.
Soccer, yeah. Soccer has a game tomorrow night.
That'll be awesome. They are tougher than I am. Thanks, sir. Transportation, yep?
Nothing to add. If there's any question.
Any question on transportation report? We'll talk to you more transportation later. Thank you, sir, for announcing. Curriculum instruction, anything for Dr. Hale?
Well, we do have a presentation of the taper, yes. There's a whole bunch of pages in there. You can look at the curriculum instruction report and she's filling you in on things that are happening with her division. But I do have to, every year, the school district receives, probably in December, it finally gets released, the taper, which is the Texas Accountability Report. And we're required to present it to you. So, inside your board packet is our taper that is on the website now. It is also posted, there's a link to it on our website that you can get to. Those are all the star scores and graduation CCMR and a one place for all the data testing and accountability last year. It also has some demographics about the school and some information about the school in the back. Also, at your place is a summary that, yeah, that Mrs. Hale prepared for you guys. And you can go down and she compared to last year, her last year's scores to this year's scores. You can kind of swiftly move your eyes down there. If it's green, it went up. If it's blue, it stayed consistent. It's red, it went down. Many times when it says it's down, it's a slightly down. I will say, you know, we're taking a pretty hard look, or not a hard look, but we're watching our math scores pretty carefully. Last year, I talked with you guys about Eureka and Carnegie and the new curriculum that we were using. And we didn't feel like after we got our scores back that that was going to serve us well. So, we revamped. We are now using that just as a resource. There was some good things about it that I've heard teachers are using. But we are going back to some things that worked in the past. And we're pretty focused on it right now. We are working with some specific grade levels, fourth grade, Algebra I, to make sure that we are catching some of those kids up and looking towards some better scores in this year's testing. We're already starting to see some of our benchmarks come back, and they're not coming back as bad as we may have anticipated. We're actually starting to see some good progress in our math, which means that we're doing the right things. But it is going to take some time. You can look through the summary and if you have any questions about it, you can ask them now and I'll pass them on to Donna.
I have probably asked, I've probably asked this question before, but I'm down on my previgent. The very first section is all last year's data.
Yes.
Why is everything else in the back all two years behind before we get the data back from the state?
Some of that is, some of that is because it takes two years or more than a year to clean it up. Like, for example, CCMR is always a lagging indicator. Because by the end of, you don't know when the students graduate. Like, you know, they take a star test, you can grade that right then. But you don't know when they graduate, who is going to college? Who is going to the military? Who is getting certificates completely through? So, that's why that lag. Same thing with attendance. Because after the year ends, there's a lot of cleanup that goes on for attendance. There's graduation rates and GEDs that have not been reported yet to the state, and we get credit for those. And so, that is some of the explanation there. Now, I think Kelly Vernon, who does our PMS, will tell you that they're going through a big change where a lot of that data is going to be sent to the state on a daily basis, whereas it used to be reported at certain times in the year. That may change us a little bit as far as we'll be able to go on and evaluate more recent data. But that's some of the explanation of why some of those are lagging indicators.
What's the point of that?
What's that?
Daily reporting?
To get data faster to where we can...
I know that's the obvious answer, but I mean, it just seems like another requirement by the state that doesn't make any sense. This is still weighing on our ratings. We haven't heard anything there.
It's more about attendance, things like that. Like, we report and we clean it up at certain times of the year. Now, they're going to be pulling it, and it doesn't go into the state's system until those dates come, they're called reporting dates. And now, it's going to be pulled daily. We'll have, we'll get it cleaned up faster. And so, hopefully, our data will be more accurate sooner, I guess, is what the goal is.
Now, he's being two years old, but his teacher salaries were prior to fair.
Yes, yes, this is last year's. Yes.
And the military still wasn't reporting and they.
They're still having to work through this. When you come to reporting military, there's also a, there's, there's a um confidentiality thing that, that the state is trying to work through on reporting, on military reporting. So right now, it's this kind of a self-report and we can get a few things to verify it, but it'd be much more accurate if the military would verify which of our kids uh enlist.
So in our seamless recording of all of this, use that word specifically for you, Richard. Yep, thank you. The, the state is requiring us, especially on the military part, to report information that is inaccessible.
Right. And that's true.
And the ACT SAT requirement, testing requirement, it doesn't affect their graduation, it only affects our CCMR?
Say that, ask that question again.
So the accelerated testers thing, that if you took Algebra I in eighth grade, then the state is requiring them to take the ACT or SAT, but not all of those kids by the time they're in high school besides they wanna go to college? So what happens to us when they don't? Because it's not a graduation requirement, so it's not holding them, so a problem with our rating, is that where it goes?
So the accelerated testing thing is something that's kind of recently come up and we're having to work through it. That truly was one I will defer to Mrs. Hale because she's the one that's been researching that. Deeper than I am. I don't want to say something that's. Yeah.
Plus it's something the kids have to pay for.
Yeah, and we're, we're working on some possibilities there because we, for, for kids who, uh to, in order for more students to take the ACT and SAT, and especially in our community where uh some of our kids are less economically, we're working on some options to try and get more of them to take tests where we provide the fee.
Yeah, because that was just another like barrier to entry. I'm like, oh, great, okay.
So I had several questions for this area, if you don't mind.
Give it a shot.
Give us a update next meeting, I would appreciate that.
Can do. Do you, go ahead and, you can ask some. Um, are you talking about the accelerated testers?
Well, I'm.
I can give it a shot.
Okay, so the whole accelerated tester thing, I'm, I'm not sure it's clear what we're trying to accomplish there again.
Yeah.
So.
Well, I, even this is a continuing complaint of mine, we don't, we tend to, I mean, I may be getting way off track here, but we, we tend to uh out again, I don't know, I'm not sure what we're trying to track. Uh, but one of the questions I was gonna actually ask Donna was um with our testing evaluation, we seem to be reaching for a lot of things and for me in life, the more complicated you make things, the more you're trying to hide things. So you get the general blame for, you know, what I, what I keep telling you, it's uh, you're, you're the establishment.
You, yeah.
So I'm not sure I understand what they're trying to accomplish here.
The only thing I could think of is that there's not that high school EOC. That the end of, end of course would be they'd be taking it in eighth grade, so it wouldn't count from the high school's score. The only thing I could think they were trying to, to even out, but then you have, then you're doubling up the scoring for that school district instead of that campus.
Yeah.
That was the only logic.
So my co, my, our conversation regarding simplifying the whole thing, even particularly regarding STAR?
Yes. Case in point.
Yeah.
Do you tell them what's needed?
I could, I could welcome, I welcome any other questions that I can defer to Mrs. Hale.
Other questions?
Is our homeless rate really sixteen percent?
What's that?
There was a number in there that said the homeless rate was sixteen percent. Where did that get in there? Page six twenty-three, I, I, I think that's what it is.
So, so many more people qualify as homeless.
Thank you, that's what I was, that's what I was looking at.
Yes, that, that number will go down considerably this year. And I believe.
And since this is public comment, any comments from the public? It'll be legal here. Seeing none, other questions from the board? We will declare the public meeting for the taper report closed. CFO's report, Ms. Maras.
I'll have a couple things to highlight in all these numbers. On page one sixteen, the interest we're receiving on the bonds. Uh, we're carrying about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand in, out of a liability accruing for arbitrage. But that's really a good thing because that means that we're maximizing what we're able to, the interest that we're able to earn under the federal tax code. Uh, if we weren't accruing a liability, then we may not be hitting that number. Um, and then the only other thing on here is attendance. If you look back at this time last year, we're about a hundred under where we budgeted, whereas this year we're running at about seventy-five under where we budgeted, so a little bit better if you look at it that way.
Not as bad.
I'm, I'm working on it. Anything I can do. I mean, that, if y'all have any questions.
I have a quick question. I've finally noticed that there's no CD attached to the Ranger uh Roundup Fund. Are we confirmed we're gonna have to take some out of general funding, fund them a little bit, because I know they here for a while?
Right.
And if she hasn't found any grants lately?
Right, right. Um, we were lucky the past couple of years where she was able to. That was really awesome. But yes, and we budgeted for that and then when we did the Vader, we budgeted a little bit more because I knew it was gonna bump it up a little. But we're still much better than we were about three year, four years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, sir.
On page eighty-one, about a quarter of the way down, there's two UL membership fees. Is that like one for junior high, one for high school? They're the same number. Do you know off the top of your head? Fourteen hundred and seventy-five times two?
Okay, one is academic and one is athletic. Yes.
And then on uh page eighty-six?
Yes.
At the very bottom, the third one from the bottom, is that hundred correct for Mills? Three hundred and six hundred?
I believe it was a four-day trip.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And it's.
That's probably right, dude.
Yeah.
Oh, there was a little bit brought back, but yeah.
Yeah, they, they did bring some money back, but yeah, four days, four-day tournament. Um, one of our, one of our challenges, and Josh, Josh can attest to this, our challenges for our soccer team is that we are having a hard time getting non-district games. Um, because anybody that's around us uh is, well, most of the teams around us are in Oklahoma and they started much later. And the teams that um are closer to us that we would want to play, um like Plainview, places like that, Josh, what's, they don't want to, they don't want to play us.
They're all in district way before we are.
Yes, they're already starting district because they have more teams.
So where do we have to go to play?
Way south.
Way south, yeah.
Yes.
We had to have several conversations about the budget on this.
Yes.
Does Kansas play soccer?
They're all at different time. They're all at different times than we are.
Yeah.
Nobody's playing.
They're, they're not playing the January games up in Kansas and Oklahoma.
Because they have a calendar.
So, so that is why, and, and, and uh Josh and I have talked over this because it is, that's, it's a pretty high number that we're having to, and we're gonna try and do what we can to, to um be efficient and, and prugal. But that's our challenge for our kids. I mean, we, we only put five games before district and both of those were tournaments.
So like we said, we sent the girls on a tournament this past weekend. They played two games.
Yes.
Um, which, which required two nights of overnight stay in order to get that, and that was a late add. Then our, our soccer boys, we sent them on two tournaments this year, which again is two overnight trip. I believe an overnight trip with hotels and stuff, you're, you're in the, you're in the four thousand dollar range on those.
Yes.
And so, yeah.
But to get, and that's really the only games they got before we're starting district.
That, those are.
That's the problem. And, and it's just kind of coming up. I mean, we're just.
Hopefully these other towns around us will see our success and they start adding soccer program and then we'll have somebody to play.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not talking to you.
No, I'm proud of the kids.
It's a good question.
Um, and I did have one other small thing to add, this handout that y'all have. And uh Josh and I have been, or Coach Hernandez and I have been working on this along with a few other people from the office. And it's just an online ticketing platform that we were looking at and just wanted to start introducing y'all to that and see if y'all had any questions or.
Is this us completely getting away from cash?
We're probably working that direction.
But I like that. I mean, I, I still think people need to have a, a way to pay. I mean, if, obviously, if I go somewhere and I have to pay cash, I mean, that's what I carry with me, is cash. I'm probably one of the few, but.
Sorry, you're the only one.
Yeah. You're the only one.
I'm the only one that's not.
But I just came to this page that says cash and cashless options. I like the, I like the ampersand in there.
Yeah.
Can I go ahead and add to this? So I can talk a little more on this. So some of the, some of the things that we're considering as we go through this, the first would be that you could purchase an athletic pass and that could be done at the beginning of the year. So like running numbers, if we sold an athletic pass to parents for fifty dollars, uh, the cost of games, football, volleyball, basketball, all these is, is on the low end, three hundred dollars a year. So if you'll buy the athletic pass, you don't have to worry about paying cash throughout the entire year. It's a one-time athletic pass, purchase it, you're done. And then you just show your card at the gate and that is gonna get you in throughout the entire year. Um, so, and then the other, the ones that don't want to buy the athletic pass, so that'd be fifty for adults, probably thirty dollars for our senior citizens, twenty dollars for our non-athletic students. And then the uh, the rest that don't want to go and buy that pass would have the option to buy um the online tickets and that's gonna be, so I'll speak directly because I'm the one at a, at a basketball game that has to go at halftime and I have to handle money. And not that I would steal money from the district, but that puts me in a situation where I've got to show that I'm not stealing money from the district, you know what I mean? And so I'm the one that's directly responsible from going and I'm the one that has to make sure that the cash is at the gates. I'm also the one that has to make sure that I go and collect the cash and then it has to be counted out and it has to be deposited. And if something goes wrong, the first person they look at is me. And so that's why I've gone more and more to wanting to get away from cash, is the handling of money and we're in, we've talked about it too, on a safety issue. Football game on a Friday night, somebody has to transport that to the bank. That person is wide open for something bad to happen. So that, there's a thought that's coming to. So that we don't have to handle it as much, you know what I mean? And getting away from it. So those are our thoughts on that.
I, I do know and, and that for older, especially our older, um, older people, it does present a challenge. I mean, I, I'll, I'll acknowledge that.
I, I, I've just been at football games and basketball games where you do have older people come up and it's, they, they're on some type of system. I don't know if it's this one in particular, but, and they're like, well, we don't know how to do it. And all they've got is cash and they don't have a debit card with them and so there's been several times, and normally they'll just say, just go on. That's what I've seen.
Yeah.
But anyway, that's, I get it for convenience and I understand.
I think, sir, and we talked, there'd probably be a big rollout program we'd do at the, initially at the very beginning to help um those individuals out. If we can go ahead and, and allow them to buy those athletic passes at the beginning of the year and then they don't have to worry about it the rest of the, the year, we'll help them to get through, you know, what, where they might be concerned. Because there's a lot, you're, you're correct. If you don't buy the tickets online, you walk up to the gate, there's a QR code that you scan and you purchase there. Some of them are gonna struggle with that, but we're, we're gonna have several avenues for this to work. Um, and to try to get away from, from cash in the district at these games.
Yes, uh, and we, you know, as we begin, we want, we want to get you guys' input. As we look at this, um, you know, we're considering this right now, as we look at it, we don't want to isolate or um disenfranchise our older people who may not be used to a phone or maybe I, I, I just tried to spend, you know, thirty minutes trying to get my dad to join a Zoom meeting. So I know that sometimes a phone or technology can be challenging. I don't want, we don't want to disenfranchise those people. But we do get concern and it's always been a concern for our auditors. Coy is a little less concerned about it, but when we were with Brown Graham, I was with Brown Graham at another district and and, and they did not like any cash at all at, at games. Um, so it's just, it's something we have to watch.
Question too would be, is this something that's gonna roll over in sessions?
It could. It absolutely could.
We, we've talked, it, it could be done. And I would also add this to, we're, we're behind a little bit in terms of what our district does. Like every Canyon School, Tampa, Dumas, Borger, they're all online tickets. So if you go to a game at, to a away game, you're gonna have to do online tickets. And so I'm not saying that's a reason to do it, but we're one of the very, very few that don't, that don't, and so.
And I hear most people drop about every time they have to go to Dumas.
Yeah.
But, but it's the way, it's the way everything's going.
It's, it's like Mr. Brown saying too, in terms of, in terms of auditing, uh, they can give us reports instantly whenever we do stuff and then they'll also deposit money in, uh instantly into account that we'll have for all of this. And so just on the, the paperwork side of everything, it cleans up a lot for us in the athletic department and then also um with, with Ms. Maras as well, so.
You think somebody doing an athletic pass to get through the year is gonna hurt the athletic program for money? You know, with all the different sports that we have, soccer doesn't have a lot of attendance.
Right.
But yet your football is probably gonna have the most and then you got your basketball.
Right.
And so how do you divide that up? You know?
Well, and all that, all of that money, all that money goes into a general fund as it is.
And you just work off whatever.
Yeah, it's a general operating fund and Ms. Maras can talk a little bit more, but it's not so much, I don't think it's like split by sport. It's more just an operating fund that goes to refs and stuff like that, right, Ms. Maras?
Helps cover expenses and then can be used for, for other operations.
Why pay these guys? Why wouldn't you just have somebody come in here and write a check for a hundred dollars and get a pass like we all have?
Most, most people will, most people will, but everyone's gonna want the option to just come to one game and pay for one game.
And I'm sure it all makes it easier for you at the end of the day or not?
Uh, it, it adds.
Some value or no value?
It does add value for everything that makes something easier. As we all know, there's a trade-off that something you didn't know about that makes it harder.
What's the money? Our pocket.
And that's like, you have to put a credit card or a checking account or whatever. Who else, who hasn't got a letter in the mail? You're, yeah, something's been stolen or leaked or whatever. So I don't know if people want money cards or not, but we need to make sure that they link. Do they link to credit cards or do they have to have a bank account?
I believe it has like Apple Pay.
And maybe the first year have a cash only, like a cash line and they have instructions to hand out for the first year, have a transition here for those people.
What's coming whether we like it or not?
It is, it's twenty, it's twenty twenty-five and I don't have to like having to scan a QR code to buy a cup of coffee when I have a ten-dollar bill in my pocket.
I just, for me personally, as the one that has to handle money at the end of the night.
Understand, yeah.
I do not like the possibility of that being put, that I could have stole something. Like I, I don't, I don't want to be put in that situation. Because there's more important things that I need to worry about than, than, than that part. And so that's, that's really why I've kind of pushed this toward the ladies and told them, I would like to see us do something a little bit different than this. Um, and just in mind, so.
Brittany, you were wanting us to look at this right now. You don't need any actions.
Is this who you use for the fundraising this summer? The football team?
No, no, that's a, it was a whole, no, 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 it's a whole, it was a whole different plot. Yeah, this is something different.
Maybe all of the athletic kids could practice their sales skills as they sold their Ranger cards. They can sell passes and teach people how to use it.
Take a lot longer to cross town.
It would take a long, it'd take a, take a two-day blitz.
Yeah.
Ms. Maraz, is that everything?
Yes.
Okay, fine. For those of you that are heading off to go watch the national championship game that I didn't realize was tonight when we scheduled this meeting, keep me posted. Board will now convene in a closed meeting to discuss the following items. Post on our agenda this evening is allowed by Texas Government Code five five one dot O seventy-four. Super, we're gonna talk about superintendent contract for personnel matters, security devices, five five one dot O seventy-six. And attorney consultation, five five one dot O seventy-one. Time is now six fifty. No voting will take place in a closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussion in a closed session will take place after the board reconvenes an open meeting.